Alright, I've called the meeting to order for the Dayton Water District at 6:05 PM. And it's all rise for the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first order of business, our guest Chuck with Environmental Partners. To give us some project updates.
Yeah, please Jason, I didn't get a chance to come to the last meeting, I wasn't available. But I've come and given an update on this here, Street Well Number One Replacement Project. We're basically moving forward, Frank Sullivan's been out there with F.G. Sullivan Drilling Company and they've finished drilling of the production well. And now they're just waiting for the screen to come in. So they've ordered the screen and they anticipate that that'll be in the next couple of weeks so that they can put the screen down and then do the pump test. Basically, MAS BP requires that we do this 48-hour pump test to determine that obviously the capacity of the well is there and that the water quality is good. After we get the results of that pump test, we'll prepare a well completion and a pump test report that will be submitted to MAS BP for their approval. And that's really the first step in that permitting process where before we were designing Kenka Well to the system, we have to make sure that it has adequate capacity and water quality so that it satisfies the needs. But we don't foresee any issues with that. There was one thing that came up during the well drilling process and that they went through a lens of silty material and Frank made the recommendation that they leave the casing in down to, I think I was, 24 feet below the ground surface so that it prevents that fine or silty material from getting into the well and into the screen. It's a good recommendation, the gravel down below is fine, so we should get the capacity that we need, we just don't want those fines to migrate into the, into the screen so that you'll have issues with that down the road. The good thing is is that, you know, obviously when we get this thing online, we'll have a much higher capacity than the well, which is what we're looking for. The first couple of points, we've been working with Jeff, he's gonna install two raw water hydrants on the raw water system so that we can run our pump tests and our hydrant fluid tests. The other thing we were talking about is when he flushes that raw water line, he's been doing it through the system and we're gonna look at potentially flushing from the tree plant the other way and then flushing out to the hydrants that he's installing and then also down at the Cedar Street well field so that you don't have to serve in the water in the system.
That's a better idea.
Yeah, I think that's a better idea, you don't waste, you know, the water to the system and then cause the disturbance for the customer, so they'll be contained to the raw water side, so that's a benefit to having those hydrants there in the future as well. We picked a couple of locations, one of them's right next to the, to the tree plant and another one of them's down towards the intersection, Cedar and Cedar Street.
Can we rehash that one tomorrow?
Yeah.
Because I'd like to hear about at least one of them next week.
Yeah.
And care about that one as well. And you know, we had changed one of the spots, remember, go there with it?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, I think it's just that we wanted one that was intermediate length that was just a little bit longer. Basically, what we're gonna do, the reason why we're throwing, it's good for the flushing but it'll provide us with pressures along the raw water line so that we can see where the restrictions are. I mean, I think that, I'm talking to Ray and Jeff, we know that it's probably down at the Cedar Street well field where the pipes go down to really small bianders and bottom, the pumps will go back on the curve. It'll be better so that you can, you know, put a grade line through the, through that raw water main to see where our restrictions are and then we'll make recommendations on how you can improve that. So that's the deal we're looking at there. And we're a little bit behind schedule only because Sullivan got out there a little bit late and then the screen, because we had this problem with other projects too where the screen was a little bit harder to get and deliver, just because of the revenue.
I was gonna say, so that screen, that was one of my questions actually, is it's a common thing for it to happen, keeping the screen in there because of the silt and all that?
Yeah, well, the configuration of the well, we're gonna keep the casing down there to prevent the fines from going in. That is something that happens, you know, during, and that's why we do this, you know, full production well installation and pump test to make sure that we know exactly, you know, that there aren't any concerns about what we're doing. That was the only concern that Frank brought up, he says that once you get down into the screen blank area that the gravel is good and you have good, you know, you'll be able to get the ground water.
And that, that screen stays down there, correct?
Yeah, that, that screen is basically in all wells, we have a section of screening that basically is a perforated pipe obviously that brings the water out from, you know, through the submersible pump and that'll be connected through to the piping system that will take it up to the well field. But yeah, that screen, that bottom part of it, I think it's normally like, it could be five to 10 feet, I don't know exactly what this one is, because we don't have the final well configuration until it's done, but he has this screen ordered and it should be done in a couple of weeks.
That's why we went, you hear it from behind you, that's kind of why we like you, Frank, he's the godfather of drilling, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's great, I mean, and the other thing too is he's kind of busy, I know that he was, he was in Seaport doing work and, and, and up here. And then, you know, obviously he made it down to Seaport Canyon, he had some other job in Auburn too, so I mean, that's been extremely busy.
You work for Ray, so.
Oh yeah, we, we work with Frank and sometimes exclusively Frank do a lot of getting him on the job too, he's been in the business forever, his dad did it, now his son's involved, so it's a, it's a great operation, you know, we like working with Frank.
So that, that screen that gets left down there, does it have to be maintained? Does it get cleaned out, I mean, on a yearly basis, semi-annually or?
That's a good question, normally what Jeff's been doing is taking a couple of the wells, or one of the wells every year, redeveloping it and they have different ways of doing, you know, that, there are new ways, you can use more of a, you know, a different type of a flushing system and to take out the, you know, to basically clean out the screen and then clean out the, and it's a kind of a surging and a drawing that they do on it so it pushes the fines away from the screen. So it's, 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 it's a big question and they, you know, there is things you can do to maintain it. I think what we're finding is the specific capacity on the wells, if you don't maintain them and do the redevelopment, the passing can go down and you're gonna get less, less far and so the best thing you can do is, what Jeff's been doing is to redevelop the wells, you know, as quickly as you need to and you can also monitor the specific capacity through the years and that's what we've done with some of our clients and we recommend it seems to get to a certain point that you wanna redevelop the wells because if you don't and it goes farther, they won't recover as much, so, so that's something we recognize.
So how much, how much longer for well one then to, I mean, from now till it's completely done?
Well, he's gonna install it and do the pump test, it'll be done in May, then we'll submit the reports, usually we'll, we'll get the report in within a month and then the EP normally, I mean, it's normally a two-month process for them to review it, but we can move forward assuming that the results are good and you don't anticipate that they won't, we're starting the design, doing the layouts and all. We're kind of holding off on that until we get a better understanding of the well, but you know, that, we're not gonna be critical of that now, I think it's more of a MAS BP. But then, once we go through with the design, we have to submit it to them again and have them redo that for well completion and, you know, we can't get their approval on it until, or until we get their approval, we can't put it up to date. We're, I think we're still targeting sometime next spring for construction, is what it is, I think we had anticipated a year to, a year and a half depending upon our schedule, so I think we're, we're in line for that still despite the site load, we've had their initial data, but we should be in good shape there. So then the next item on the agenda is the Risk and Resilience Assessment, which as I presented in past meetings, is a requirement of the US EPA where all systems have to do a Risk Resilience Assessment and for Dayton-sized systems, which is up to the medium-sized systems, about 50,000, just short of that, they have to complete the Risk Resilience Assessment by June 30th and then update the Emergency Response Plan by December 31st. Or either, that's the end date, but it'll be exactly six months after we certify that we've completed the Risk Resilience Assessment, which we've been getting a lot of these and, and you know, I think that, I'm not really, we, we're gonna be having the site visits next Tuesday, we've scheduled those. And basically, we know a lot about it already, the system obviously, because we just did the water system master plan, but we're kind of looking at it on a different view, more on the vulnerability of the system. And that's gonna target, to a large extent, the SCADA and IT because of all the stuff that's been happening lately. And that's kind of what the focus of the EPA was, back after 9/11, they were looking for more security and hard security measures, the cleansing and whatnot, now they're looking more at the, the cyber security and the IT stuff, so we're gonna take a look at that. What we've noticed on a lot of these is that, you know, a lot of people complain about it being a, you know, an unfunded mandate by, by the feds. It is true, it's obviously something that you have to go through because you're required to, but what we're finding, a lot of our clients, very similar to yours, are looking at their systems a little bit differently and just the communication between your IT support or your SCADA support or, you know, they're finding, okay, we're not as protective as we thought we were, so it's, it's good just to bring up the subjects and have the meetings to, you know, make contact with your subs that provide your IT or your evening software and just to make sure that you're protected like you should be. So we've had some good results for it and, you know, you know, it's been very beneficial to a lot of the systems that we've worked with. And in the end, the documents stay secure with you, it's just a certification to USPA that Jeff will sign off on, we'll prepare our certification forms and submit it by June 30th and I don't have any issues with that, completing by that date, so. And then the Emergency Response Plan will just follow thereafter, as I mentioned, that if Jeff certifies on June 1st, when we complete it, then it'll just have to be done by December 1st, six months after when it's submitted. And I don't foresee any, any issues with the schedules. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on that, it's a pretty straightforward process we've been doing for several systems and we'll move forward and complete that as soon as we can.
No, I don't have any questions on that one.
Okay. I do have to apologize, in the last meeting or one of the last meetings I presented that the Main Street project was funded by MAS BP and I have to apologize, it was my fault. I looked at the list wrong and you are below the fundable list, so it's not something that GDP is looking to find out, but obviously it'll stay on the list and could get funding next year. But what I told Jeff that I was gonna do is that I'm also gonna look into the USDA Rural Utility Services Grant Process and I'm gonna communicate with them and find out whether the Main Street project would be fundable for. I think that one of the things that helps is, you know, Dayton's considered a disadvantaged community that you could potentially get some pre-grant funding there. The good thing about that too is that if there is a possibility, obviously it would take an expense to submit the grant application, which would be done before, it's an online process, but if, if I talk to them and they think it's favorable, I think it would be worthwhile because I've worked with communities where they got like 42% to 46% grant funding and low-interest loans that'll be extended out over a 40-year period as opposed to a 10 or 20-year term, so that you'd be paying, especially with the rates being more right now. The other thing that's good about being connected with the feds is that, you know, there is this infrastructure bill that may or may not happen down in DC, if it does, then you put yourself in a more favorable position if you submit and grant the funding for that, it might even become more grant funding from over.
So if we would, say, go through the grant process with the USDA, we would be ahead of the game if the infrastructure bill came out of the question, what I'm understanding?
So their, their schedule is, is that by, say, the beginning to the end of August of this year, you'd submit your grant application and they would afford it by the end of the federal official year, which is September 30th, October 1st. So if they already have the project in and it may be viable project, you know, I, this, Norman St. Jane is the New England rep, or it's kind of, they split it up kind of funny, it's MAS, Rhode Island, Connecticut, he's actually in Connecticut, but he reps Massachusetts and I'm working with him on a Massachusetts project right now. But I'll communicate with him and, you know, get back to Jeff that he can forward the information along to you. If the project's favorable for them, might be something we might wanna consider at the, the next meeting.
Yeah, we kind of wanna get that ball rolling.
Yeah, I know, and I know it's, and I, again, I apologize for my oversight, but you know, I think that it could be a good project for, for federal funding, especially now with the funding climate that could be getting better, so we'll see how that works. But that's basically what I had, you know, if you won't have to answer questions or, again, if I, if you have something after the meeting, you know, if you need a call.
What was the first one that you said that we were below the fundable list?
The MAS BP Drinking Water SRF funding, I looked at the list and saw you were there and, and didn't see the line that was above it, so. But that's not to say that it, it, it won't move up next year and could be fundable if the USDA doesn't work out, so. We'll always keep that option.
The MAS BP one is restricted for low-interest loans, things like that?
Yeah.
Okay, no grants though?
No, they have, that's a, they have actually low-interest forgiveness loans too, which would be helpful, but I don't, I don't know what the, you know, obviously the project would have to be sorted first and then we can see what the conditions are for funding with that, it could be fundable.
And so my, it was my only questions, Eric, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for your time.
Much appreciated, as always.
Alright, we'll see you again soon.
Bye, bye.
Alright, thank you, stuff alright, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm proud of you.
Oh yeah, Toby, he's texting something, I think he can't hear us, yeah. But, sorry.
Toby.
Be careful, see you guys later.
Can I get that?
Yeah, try and get that, yeah.
Then you gotta be geared up.
Mine's muted.
Oh, that's muted.
Yeah. How about I just turn my, I'll turn my.
This is a disaster.
Just turn, just turn all your volume down and see if.
I'm just gonna get off, I'm just starting up. I'm just leaving, I guess. It's my bad, my bad. We don't, uh. Is it gone? Are you near it or?
I'm near it, I got my voice on.
I wish we were all talking all of them. There's a few persons in there.
Why not?
This is the first one, I said it. See if I can hear you. He says the echo's gone. Alright, turn your volume up maybe.
Mine's down.
Who's this up? Hello? He said it's good.
There we go.
But can we hear that?
Yeah, turn it up maybe. Yeah!
Yo, it's supposed to work, there we go.
Everybody wanna?
No, I don't think it's.
I mean, unfortunately, we don't have it there. It was awful. Okay, we'll do it tomorrow. How about just dial it in?
Yeah, how about, yeah, try that.
Why not?
That's just not, I'm on mute and I have everything.
The echo, the echo came back.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
I hear you, yeah.
I need to get that actual big screen to ready now.
Don't we bother?
Don't we bother?
Yeah, the audio was really all that, was bad, I think, yeah, as long as you guys can hear us.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, Toby, go ahead.
Thanks for having us back, sorta, in a virtual way. Wish we were there, but we're excited to be there actually tomorrow to get into the nuts and bolts. I'll let Toby sort of give you an overview of where we are with the model and where we're gonna be going tomorrow and we promise a wholesale, in-person, if you're in person, hopefully, next month of where we've landed and some report level details around where the model is, but I'll let Toby give you a rundown.
Sure, so, um, thank you Scott. Basically, we have finished the construction of the model, it is, I think, in really good shape right now and as you know, you guys provided a lot of information to us both on budgetary and historical billing patterns and we've taken that data and, you know, we built, basically, the, the model itself works as sort of two separate pieces. The first is really where we're projecting what we think you're going to need for revenue and that's really a combination of the operational expenses that we expect going forward, the debt service that you currently have in force and that was all provided by you, the, the future operational expenses, we did project of course, but the debt service that exists is actually based on, you know, it's based on real numbers from, from the borrowing institutions. And then, to that, we've added in a CIP module, which is really the expected cost of future capital spending and that was based on the master plan that Wright Pierce prepared for you. And so we have everything that's in that report currently in the model, basically on the schedule that they were specifying with the costs that they were specifying and, you know, we add those three things together and, and I wish I could show you, but basically, the CIP module is probably the most complex in, in the, in the model itself and it's basic, its basic function is to take basically a list of projects, a, a series of options as how you're planning to finance them and when you're planning to construct them and then we turn that into a cash flow. And so all of these things happen in real time and then so that's sort of the first piece and that gives you what we call the cost of service and, so that's, that, that's sort of the, how much money we need to raise. And then the second piece is we then take that number, the how much money we actually need to raise and using a combination of potential future rate structures and historical billing patterns, we then basically build a revenue generation model. And you'll be able to see it tomorrow morning of course, but within the model, as we discussed now, boy, probably six or seven or eight weeks ago, within the model now, we have the ability to model a whole host of different changes. So we can change within the model in real time and you can see the, the impact on your financials, we can change obviously anything in the CIP, if we wanna move a big project back by a couple of years, so be it, if we wanna assume we're gonna get a grant portion, so be it, if we wanna debt finance it rather than cash finance it, easily done, they're all done via pull-down menus and they change the cash, sort of the cost of service needs in real time. And then so on top of that, we layer in the ability to model the rates using your existing rate structure and show you what that, we think that looks like over the course of the next 10 years. We have the ability to give you a fixed charge, we have the ability to change some of your policies, you know, change the included consumption within your, within your base charge and I think that's something we're gonna wanna look at because you'll, you'll be able to see, we have a statistical breakdown of your past three years of consumption and most of the water that, that goes out of taps in Dayton, never, they never pay a penny for, it's, you know, it's, they're getting it under their, under their biannual base charge and so we, we can take a look at modifying that in order to get more billable water, we can take a look at changing the relative value of the tiers and what I mean by that is so, within your existing rate structure, the, you know, obviously what we call tier zero has no value because it's, it's the included consumption, but within your rate structure, the first tier, you currently are billing at 5.50 per thousand gallons, your second tier is at $6 a gallon, so you have basically a 9.1% premium there and on the tier three, you have basically a 22.7% premium over tier one numbers. Now, we can alternate those relative values in order to basically drive additional revenue, but as I said, also, we can put in a fixed charge and then we can take a look at what your, what your rates are gonna need to change in order to get to a healthy outlook, both on the minimum charges for both residential and industrial based on your current customer counts as well as your annual, annual volumetric raises. And then on top of that, we overlay, obviously, the very important revenue stream associated with your taxes based upon last year's tax revenues and mill rate and then we make a projection going forward from there and all of those combine in to basically give you a revenue estimate that we can compare against, compare against what we expect for expenses going forward. And so, you know, we'll be able to put up on the board what we think your current rates will do over the next 10 years and I, I don't think you're gonna like it very much if you go with the full CIP. So, you know, your real options are gonna be modifying your rate structure or changing sort of the suggested CIP that was included in the EPG report. And, you know, we, those are things that, you know, obviously Woodard and Kern is agnostic on, but we can show you what we think the financial outcomes are, associate with the many different variables that you have at your disposal to generate revenues. And as I said, we can change the relative values, you know, we could bump up tier two to a significant premium over tier one because you do bill a fair amount in tier two, not that much, you bill very little in tier three, so there's not much we can do if we don't get rid of the 20, the 20 units in tier zero, as we call it, if, if we don't change that to drive more of the gallons into actual billable units, we're gonna have a very tough time being able to fund the full CIP and, you know, we can go through that and we'll do all that tomorrow. We may need a little bit more than an hour and so we have, you know, I, I'm able to stay as long as the district is interested in having me present to run through options and talk about how the model works and, and show you how things sort of proceed, both myself and my assistant Jim Aiken will be there and we're gonna be bringing obviously a projector and we were gonna put this up on the big, one of your big walls and that way we can all see it in real time and, and talk to one another about, so anyone, certainly, all commissioners are welcome, certainly Jeff is gonna be there and, and I assume maybe some, some of Jeff's staff, I'm not sure, but obviously it's, it's gonna be a workshop, it's gonna be an open table discussion where we think we have a reasonable, actually a reliable financial projection model built based on current economics for you and really about, you know, from that point, it's all about taking a look at the what-if scenarios and making decisions about how we're gonna proceed on, on some of the big stuff that you have on your plate.
What time is that tomorrow?
10:30.
10:30.
And I believe we're gonna be meeting there at Old Town Hall if I'm correct, right?
We are at Old Town Hall.
Perfect. The, the thing I remember about that is you have a couple of big blank walls that would be great to project onto.
That's how, is Derek, is Derek finally going to be in there?
Did you talk to Derek?
Either he or you, I figured you're there.
Unless, unless Derek, if he's gonna be here, it's not, we could work.
And don't worry if, if everybody can't, and I'm not sure if you got a quorum challenge or an issue with that, I think I know that Jeff mentioned that there would be at least one commissioner there when we spoke, but, you know, everyone is welcome as long as you guys have no issue on a quorum or, or, you know, open meeting or anything like that.
Meeting would be my concern if we get too many, too many folks there.
But, but we will certainly repeat it, I mean, we're trying to fine tune it and then move toward a report, certainly next month at your open meeting, we'll absolutely be able to, you know, do the same process, we'll have refined it some, but we'll still be having the same dialogue because, you know, it obviously takes you, an action of your board to make any kind of movements toward actual modifications or, you know, take any of the recommendations and, and move forward with them.
Yeah, so tomorrow's basically a dry run to go through everything.
Tomorrow was basically to. Tomorrow was basically to show you the model.
Yeah.
Give you a chance to provide us feedback. Tell us if there are additional things you might like us to assess. And then just to honestly, to truth test some of the assumptions we made about, you know, growth in some of your revenue streams and, um, the feasibility of some of the, the rate changes that look like, look like they're coming out of the model. Excuse me, I have the cups. I do think that, um, you know, I think it'd be worthwhile to have, uh, you know, anyone who's involved in finance of the, of the district there, um, for sure. And, um, you know, as many commissioners as we, as we can get who are willing to be there without violating open meetings law. And I don't know exactly what the provisions of that are for the district.
Yeah.
I think also where we'll be starting is making sure that we're looking, there's some what-if scenarios associated with the projects we've been assisting you with already. So I think the Main Street project that you've committed to doing, we've done a couple of things since our last meeting. I know we're on the SRF, so clearly we're modeling borrowing that funding under the SRF program as one scenario. We subsequently did provide some back support for the requesting of an earmark, um, under the congressional earmark, resurrection that we recently had here occur. And so I think last week, that paperwork went in. Who knows how that will shake out? I think it's, you know, everybody's trying to get an earmark, so not sure about how that'll work out, but our fingers are crossed. We also submitted a, uh, expression of interest for a new grant program that would fund small community, um, design level effort for the design of that tour. So, you know, that could yield a few hundred thousand dollars worth of value, um, into the fray, uh, for that project. We also are looking at, um, drilling tomorrow. The driller will be walking the site for the potential well site. We expect to drill there, um, probably by the end of the month. So I think by the end of April, we're hoping to have the wells and see what production is there. And then likely, you know, with a favorable outcome, that conversation is, you know, development of those wells. And obviously, purchase of the property. We're working on a grant application, which I think you got last year, but it didn't, wasn't utilized because there was, um, not enough substantial water found at the site. But we are looking for a grant, um, preparing that documentation, um, so that perhaps you'll get a couple of hundred thousand dollars for the purchase. It might not be significant, but it, we, we have the ability to run that scenario through the model. And, uh, those are the two projects that we see as your near-term sort of probably major investments.
Any little bit helps, that's for sure.
Right.
Do you happen to have a, um, PowerPoint or something that you could email us, um, of what you're gonna go over tomorrow? That way for those that can't be there, um, that can possibly review it and ask questions?
Uh, I, I, I don't, um...
It's more of a dynamic modeling exercise. Like here's where we see you with all the CIP items that were in your master plan, extrapolated out over the window of, you know, the next 20 years. And it's more dynamic plug-in, plug-and-play type of, um, exercise tomorrow. But we could get some screenshots perhaps, you know, and then send that along after the fact or something like that, Toby, maybe?
Um, yeah, I, I, I suppose we could do that with no problem. I, I think this, the screenshots af- after the initial discussion, I think it would be the more valuable piece, right? Because right now, all we have is a model that's really sort of set up for, here's what we see the base conditions are for the community right now, or for the district, pardon me. And, um, you know, I, I, I think it's gonna be incredibly important to get feedback from you before we start throwing out anything that would be foible. Believe me, I've seen this, you know, we, we, we wanna just be careful about putting in what, what would be considered or what could be considered by people, a formal presentation, which has completely misleading information in it, so...
Right. And people would misconstrue your intention of rate increases. I think what you'll see is that, as Toby said, and I don't think it'll be a surprise to you, it, you know, the wish list is large and the impact on your rates, if you were to carry them, particularly in a borrowing type of scenario going forward, would be burdened, would be probably as I would imagine you would view them as overly burdensome and not desirable to bring to your constituents.
Yeah, no, I've agreed. And I think it'll come down to the decision as we move forward, as we're gonna have to pick and choose as to which, which items we're gonna have to fund and, and put in the study, so...
Right. And they can always be adjusted going forward. And maybe, you know, the plan is kinda look at where do they plug in so that you can maintain a, um, a reasonable increase over time, you know, recognizing that in order to stay up with those projects. But you don't wanna have too many big ones front-loaded and keep running with the big ones. You know, kinda stagger them out and, and pay some debt service and then, you know, manage that, manage that financial scenario such that your rate increase is something that's tolerable. Otherwise, it, it's just out of control. So I think that's the kinda stuff we're gonna look at.
Other, otherwise people will just, well, whether it needs to be done or not, they will not like the idea that you're doing any more investing at some point.
Right.
They'll, they'll try and squash needed investment, so...
Yeah. Yeah, and we're, you know, we're kinda, we're kinda making up our lost time here too. So it's gonna be, uh, a double sword effect, so...
And that's the deferred maintenance catch-up that every utility is faced with. And that's the challenge everyone has. And you just don't have a big enough, um, you know, some utilities can figure that out because they have a big enough base of, of, uh, service connections. And that's not the case for you. It's challenging, but, um, but we'll work through it and we'll get there. We'll find something that works, works for your, um, for your customers and gets you moving in the right direction.
Exactly. I mean, the, 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 the combination here that we end up with is basically a recommended list of projects that we think you can afford going forward, based on, on a set of rates. Because obviously, in the end, the model ends up, you know, sort of, there's a tab in it called the sensitivity analysis, where we do most of the analysis. Everything else, there's a bunch of other tabs that are running background algorithms. So, you know, if we change the size of your tiers to make them a little smaller, to push more water into either the paying tiers or the higher level tiers, those automatically recalculate, you know, how many gallons you're gonna sell in each of the new size tiers and, and recalculates the revenue based on the proposed rate adjustments. And, and you'll, I'll, I'll, I'll walk through the, before we get into any sort of analysis tomorrow, we're gonna walk through the model and how it works so that you all understand what the purpose is and then understand how do we make decisions on rates? Because it's really, it's less about making next year work. It's more about making sure that in the long run, you have a combination of rate increases that not, not necessarily are super acceptable, but can support the, you know, can support the capital that you're actually intending to do. And, uh, because the capital is gonna be what's driving the rates here, there's no doubt about that. Um, the investment that's done in, in, you know, is based on the deferred investment that Scott referred to. You know, catch-up is always painful, um, and, you know, we'll, we'll walk you through how to help or help you understand, you know, what, okay, well, if we do this project but not these three, and, or if we take this one that was, we were planning on cash financing and, uh, actually debt finance it, here's what that does, because those obviously hit your cash flow statement and hence your, um, reserve balances in a very, very substantially different way. And so the model takes all those things into account. And, um, basically, at the end of the day, it, it gives us a projection of your financial performance for the next 10 years, based on the, the combination of revenue design and expected costs.
Okay, um, thanks for that information. Okay?
Is there any, would you guys rather do this as a group?
I think doing it as a group would be better.
Yeah, so...
Honestly.
For sure.
I know it's only a craft, but I, I would like to have Derek there and, and Eric and myself. It's, it's, it's an important, it's kind of an important thing.
Is there any way we can reschedule this so I, I can post it on open meeting law? And, um, the commissioners all can attend?
I, I'm, I, most with impunity, you can reschedule. I'm, I'm in Massachusetts now, uh, every Tuesday and Thursday. This Thursday is spoken for. How, how, how far in advance do you need to post for open meeting?
Forty-eight hours.
Okay, so yeah, this, this Tuesday is, or this Thursday is spoken for, although I could, I could do, hold on, let me, I could do Friday morning. But I would need to probably be on my way back. Uh, I'm taking my son to a college to...
Friday's a no-go. I gotta get in Springfield all day.
How about, how about, um, how about like next?
Tuesday the twentieth in the morning?
Yeah, I was gonna say Tuesday the twentieth might, um, might work out fine.
Double check this.
Fine.
I can push that, I can push that. Absolutely, in the morning, you can have, you can have one until two o'clock on Tuesday of the twentieth.
Wanna do like eleven to two? What time?
I, I think, any, I can be, I can be reliably to Dayton by ten o'clock in the morning. Maybe ten thirty's a little safer. I mean, there's not much traffic these days, but, um, I think I can be reliably to Dayton by ten. So if we wanted to schedule for ten, uh, we'd have, we'll have a short setup time to get the projector set up and all that. But, um, that way we would have as much time as you wanted, certainly till lunchtime. And if you wanted to go all the way till two on Tuesday, that, that time slot's pretty much open for me.
Alright, so ten o'clock on Tuesday the twentieth?
That sounds good.
Sounds, sounds good to us.
So does this mean that...
Here, can we do it at the, we can't do it at the plant, can we? Right.
Do you wanna pull, we can put that on the calendar. Do you wanna make sure everybody is available?
Yeah, it's good, yeah, we're good. I know I can make it. So that's two out of the three, and that's, that's... Yeah, I'm sure Derek, yeah.
Okay, that works good for me.
Okay. We're not coming down tomorrow morning then?
Correct.
Okay. Very well.
Flexibility, that's for sure.
Rob, I, I apologize that this, I, I think we had a slight miscommunication on our end when we, we set this initial appointment and didn't let Scott know, so, uh, that's our fault.
All good.
No, it's fine, um, Jeff, we're doing, the, the driller is walking, um, tomorrow with our guys. So if you wanna, um, I may come down for that walk, if you're gonna...
What, what time is that? Eight thirty?
I think, um, I think that was, I think it was ten, I think it was ten thirty, but I'll send you a, an email, Jeff. I'll verify it.
Yeah.
I think I'll, I'll be there tomorrow.
It might even have been a little bit earlier, so I'll double check.
I think it's eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
I believe.
Okay. I, they didn't send me an invite for that either. I'm trying to still work through.
Massasoit, eight thirty.
Okay. Yeah, I think they thought to be out there for a few hours anyway, just checking the location.
That's good.
It's good.
Awesome.
Great.
Alright.
Thanks, look forward to the twentieth.
Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Does that say on?
It'll just get recorded in the meeting, so it's...
But you're already recording back there, correctly?
I am, yeah.
Just to, uh, clarify one thing, we weren't below the line on the SRF. We were the last one. We were above the line.
So what, so why did I go? Okay.
What, what moved, what moved the line? They, they select, it's like a point system where they select a certain, uh, group, uh, a project, not a group, a project to, to fund.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I can show you some of them. Certain projects need to be, uh, rated and stored.
Yeah.
And we were the last one. We weren't rated.
Yeah.
The line, we were there. So we're above.
So that's a good thing.
Why does he think we're below? Is he just...
Did he read it wrong?
Reading it wrong? We're... Where are you guys?
Okay.
Alright, uh, that's, that's better than this.
So that is, those are the two guests. I don't know if we wanna newly elected selectman, Mr. Hall? I don't know if you'd wanna speak as a guest, or do you wanna wait for public input, or what?
I would prefer to speak under public influence.
Sounds good.
Simply because I'm here tonight as a resident.
Okay.
I don't wanna speak on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. I haven't attended an actual meeting yet.
Okay.
But I wanna become informed, but I do have a couple of questions on the, one about the project survey on Main Street and also about the annual election. But I'll, I'll wait till the input, that's okay?
That's fine, perfect, that's fine. Alrighty. Alright, approval, approval of the minutes of the prior meetings. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March, of the March eighth monthly meeting?
So moved.
I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Alright, is there a motion to approve the minutes of March eighth, of the March eighth executive session meeting?
So moved.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Reading of the correspondence. Anyone have any correspondence to, to read?
Nothing.
Nothing? Alright, financial conditions. Operating budgets and actual balances, income for the first nine months of the fiscal year is one million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand and eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents, with expenses at one million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents, which is seventy point seven percent of our budgeted expenses. Receivables, as of March thirty-first, outstanding receivables are seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. Months commitments, eight thousand, one hundred and one dollars and five cents. And water receivables for the month were five, uh, fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-seven cents. Is there a motion to accept the financial reports as presented?
So moved.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to approve the expenditure warrants as presented?
So moved.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent's report, Jeff?
We just completed, uh, leak detection survey as of Friday, and it went quite well, actually. Wasn't a, he didn't find a lot of leaks, but he did find, um, one that he estimated at around thirty gallons a minute, we fixed it already.
That was the one on forty-four?
Yep. Then he fixed that Friday.
Good.
And he was spot on the correlation.
Do we know how long that was there by chance?
No. It was just following around, never served. Could've been a while, could've been a long time.
So you said it's thirty gallons? I'm just doing, I'm just doing some quick math.
Brad filed another leak, uh, Thursday fixed that Friday as well, and, uh...
That's forty-three thousand gallons a day?
Yeah, it's a lot, it's, it's thirty gallons a minute. And we're probably...
Thirty times sixty, it's eighteen hundred an hour, times twenty-four hours?
Say about eighteen thousand gallons a day or something like that.
Yeah, forty-three, forty-three thousand a day.
Yeah, it's a lot. So we think we found around fifty gallons or, or so or more, uh, worth of leaks, which is probably somewhere around thirty gallons, thirty million gallons a minute. So we did, we did get, uh...
So that, so that thirty, that thirty gallons a minute, that one on forty-four, comes out at fifteen point seven million gallons a year? Just a lot, just that one leak.
Yeah. So he's, he's scheduled to come in every year and we, we got him on the road, so...
And for short money, I think that's the wisest thing to do.
I will, um, I mean, to put in, to put in perspective, Cedar One is pumping thirty-five gallons a minute right now.
That's crazy.
Pretty significant. You don't think of thirty gallons a minute as much, and most time, you know, when I worked in Easton, like I said before, we could probably pump four thousand gallons a minute at any one time. Town, it's the size of Somerset, bigger town, but the same amount of residents. Town, the size of Somerset, bigger town, but the same amount of residents, so it's we didn't know, we, we had many gallon, gallon leak though at one point, and we couldn't find it, and we were keeping up. But, but putting in perspective that we're pumping thirty-five gallons a minute out of one of our wells, we just saved one, and that's, it's kind of crazy.
It's crazy.
What did you, what did you like, figure that we were losing? The percentage you put out?
Twenty-four point one percent, one zero and eight percent. Um, I think, I think you'll see, we have to wait till, we won't go too late.
Right, right.
It's, it's gonna be a lot. Uh, plus our cali, uh, we had our meters calibrated in the plants last week, and there was a three percent uh, difference, so that's another, we can knock that off as well.
Off the percent?
Those three percent variation in the, in the plant meters to what we what it was doing, so I can knock that off as well.
Is that just from a cal, is that from a calibration perspective, or not being calibrated?
It was off three percent.
Okay.
I can, I can take that off on that round of trouble, I can submit that.
How, when do we get that calibrated?
Once a year.
Once a year?
Yeah, customary once a year. All of our uh, mag, all of our meters, which is once a year. So we're flushing April twenty-sixth, uh, we're starting our flush, we'll stop quitting. Then we did send a notice, but we're gonna post it around town. I didn't wanna do it too early, 'cause you get a little run to it, so we're probably gonna do it now, end of this week.
I'd say the week before or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, you got a point there. I mean, it's up for three weeks, everyone just kinda, maybe the first weeks, yeah.
Yeah, the road closed on Saturday. April twenty-sixth, we hope, uh, to May fourteenth, but hopefully it won't take that long, we're kinda preparing for three weeks.
Where we, uh, where we, I don't know, is there a, a, a certain place to start?
We started, we started at the plant, oh.
Okay. And that's all the hydrants, correct?
Yeah, whatever. Until we have a, a real survey done, it's, it's, we're gonna try to jump higher. It'll help.
When do we, uh, is that a night, nighttime operation?
Approximately seven PM to three in the morning. And the reason we had flushing sooner is because Cedar Three being down, and how busy Sullivan's been. He's working on Cedar Three right now. At the previous meeting, we've had to rehab Cedar Three. Uh, the pump, the pump dropped off on it, uh, so he has to pump out right now, it's in his shop, and we had to wash some parts and, and pump. And uh, once that's in, we can flush. Every year it seems to be something at this time of year that has conflicted with flushing. Last year we had a filter down. This year, Cedar Three went down, but that's why I pushed, pushed it back uh, as late as we did. We should be flushing right now, if there's no way to do it without Cedar Three.
And we have, we have the manpower in the plant to make up for the water, to make the water once, because we're obviously gonna lose a lot of water flushing?
Well, uh, it's, it's a necessity, I mean, you hear, you hear the complaints about not flushing.
Yep.
Then when we do flush, many are complaints that it's, you know, we're gonna drive it to the flushing, so. If you don't flush, the mains get to break your money, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it, it is.
Well, we, we gotta do it this year, 'cause we didn't do it last year, and if we're gonna get brown water, I mean, you're obviously gonna get brown water complaints when we flush, um, is there anything that we can do to be proactive with the brown water complaints, or just kinda take it as on a case by case basis?
We're gonna have signs out there saying we're flushing.
Yeah.
We have signs that we made up, we're just gonna draw them around town. Kind of those.
I was driving through, I was driving through the middle of the road, and they said the same thing, just hydrant flushing, expect brown water.
So it has the same signs, expect to come on.
Expect brown water.
Okay.
And it won't, it won't.
It's minimal.
Um, very well, we need a calibration, calibration. We're meeting with the web developer uh, tomorrow, next Wednesday, so we're, we're, we're actually moving along pretty good with the new website, we're, we're using the same company that the town used, uh, so hopefully it's, it's a nice, simple website. Yeah, I like the look already.
When are they, when are they supposed to be done?
When are they supposed to be done? Like thirteen to twenty weeks?
Oh, so they're coming back, they're coming back for an update?
This is the first meeting of, you know, I already sent them what we're looking for, and they're designing a little bit something.
It's like the first draft, the rough draft?
Yeah.
It won't be, I mean, obviously we might just be getting out, but we at least got it. So obviously I'll have to go to great study, that is uh, and just to reiterate, we did get a grant for that great study, the grant was uh, in E twenty split, so we paid twenty cents on the dollar for that, that was very good. We got the, Brook Street, heard that, I'll be moving that tomorrow. I do, I've been told, I'm hoping, kinda praying for that, I wish they would already drill, but end of the month, I mean, I've been told, I'm hoping end of the month they're drilling, you know it's there.
Have we heard anything, any pushback or anything from the Somerset lawyers or, or anything?
Somerset's uh, changing a little now, so hopefully it'll be a little more uh.
Any progress on using their well, that has awesome, awesome water? Possibly maybe?
We'll see.
Okay.
So new, new administration comments, we'll see.
So did they, so they had their election this past, their water district election?
No, not yet.
I think it's a week.
Oh, really?
And then obviously the Main Street, uh, we, we applied for a grant, uh, not a grant, earmark, Scott was saying, uh.
For the engineer?
It was the first round, and just threw some money out, and there's earmarks, and there are a lot of earmarks. Yeah, I'm not really savvy to this stuff, but um, kinda why we use whatever term, they look for this stuff, that's all they do is look for this stuff. I cannot I, I can't stress enough to have a, a engineered firm as proactive as they are. I mean, there's things we do out there, it's all day, you're running around, working the plant, rather than dealing with, they just come, hey, I got, I'm gonna put you in for a grant. So yeah, we look for them, but.
Does he just do it? Do, do you have a list of the grants that they've put in for us?
He put in for the design phase grant, she said, we covered the design, which would say around three hundred thousand dollars, so they put in for that. We're trying to get an earmark, so what, what we did was, is we had to reach out to our reps, our representatives, uh,
Padilla?
Ma Pacico, Patricia Dadd, representative, and uh, and they were more than gracious enough, gracious enough to give us endorsements. And the town as well, they they don't have anything really coming up right now, so nothing, it didn't conflict with, uh, you know, we weren't competing, so I was on Zoom with them last week, you know, the, the board of selectmen signed a nice letter in support of this project. We could, um, you know, right, we, we might have been in mind to help with that project.
Strictly for the Main Street project?
Yes.
How's the Aggie school going?
They just were having a small animal recently, that's gone.
What's that?
Small animal, I don't know, if, if you're not familiar, the, the building is called Small Animal, and that's where the dogs, if you have a dog.
Yeah, I sent them that, did it?
Yeah. Uh, that building's gone.
Really?
Yeah. And that, I believe, that's gonna be a pocket one, I don't know.
Actually, I actually kinda got in the old business when I asked you that question, but.
What's that?
Said I actually kinda got in the old business looking at the, uh, this guy, and I asked him about the first thing.
No, they, that probably, you can ask him that question for the next year. They're gonna be continually doing work for a while. Good progress.
Alright.
Alright.
That's all you have?
I mean, I could probably come up with a lot of stuff, but I'm, I'm ready.
No, that's good, we got a lot of stuff going on, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of stuff going on. Meetings, meetings, meetings.
Alright. Old business, um, we talked about Bristol, uh, Bristol County Ag. T-Mobile antenna renewal, anything with that?
Um, I have it out to T-Mobile, we've had everything like that, we've gone back and forth a few times.
We're not giving them any more money back there, right?
Oh, no, we're asking for more money.
Okay, good.
Yeah, good.
Meter upgrade program, anything new on that as far as installing the old, the new old meters, I guess?
No.
Okay. Budget fiscal twenty twenty-two draft is presented, I think we're all still going through that, looking at it, going around. What's the, the final date on that, what we have to be done?
The next meeting would be good.
Okay.
Well, we can actually go over it, then we just have to make a meeting, we have to sign, we have to sign in seven days, and of course in seven days before the meeting.
No, I just wanna put it on here, you know, let's, let's have a rethink by next meeting, that we were having, pushing, kicking the can down the road. No one likes the budget stuff, but gotta get it done. Okay. That's it for old business, new business, other post-employee benefits investment. Is that something Derek brought up, or?
No.
That's what you emailed us, right?
I emailed you the, the presentation from Potomac. Um, the town goes, most towns do it, they invest the money, you're allowed to invest your old debt.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, I just haven't done it, 'cause we didn't really have that much, and I'd like to get it in there.
I said we had a CD before?
It's in the CD right now.
Yeah.
So do we each have to take action on that?
Um, no, I'm just.
Just for our reference?
Yeah, just knowing you guys are good.
I'm fine.
You can wait, uh, is this uh, uh, next month? Is that okay to wait out, like, you could make a motion, but Derek, not you, but.
We can do it next month, that's all.
You can make a motion, you wanna?
Make a motion to extend it? So no, no, I'm needing.
Allow you to, well, not you, you know.
Oh, okay, yeah. So we don't need to do that now?
No, we can do it next month.
Okay, yeah, let's do it next month.
We'll do it next month.
With Derek here. Announcements. Next regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Get your calendar up.
Get the calendar up.
What's the date there?
You say we have Thursday, May thirteenth at six PM, if it works for everybody. May sixteenth, or May thirteenth is Thursday night. And I am good on Thursday night, uh, on the thirteenth.
I can do that.
And Derek can be there?
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll make him be there.
At six?
Yeah.
Do you wanna try doing it in person again?
I'll try, I mean, yeah, I think so. I'd, I'd rather be in person.
I'd rather be in person.
Yeah, so what? Zoom stuff's good for a little bit, but just like a regular work meeting, I'd rather be in person.
It looked like it was helped this, it looked not helped this.
Alright. So we're okay with thirteenth, six? The district annual election will be held on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, what is that, seven, May, and?
Noon to seven.
Noon to seven? Noon to seven PM. And that'll be up at the plant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the annual district meeting will be May twenty-seventh, so May's gonna be full, huh?
Hmm.
Yes.
And that's, I'm guessing a Tuesday night?
That's it.
Uh, I usually try to do.
It's a Thursday night as well, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a Thursday night as well. And what time is that?
Seventy-seven.
Seven? May twenty-seven. Water District. I gotta put it in now, or else I'll forget.
Right, exactly.
And seven AM, good. That is it for announcements and public inputs. Selectman Hall? Oh, actually, Mr. Hall, right, as, speaking as a resident, correct?
Yes. Um, my name is Leonard Hall, seven sixty Main Street, Dayton. I have a couple of questions. One, the annual election is May seventeenth. If anyone wanted to run, uh, when would they need to have their papers and?
That deadline has since passed.
The deadline has passed?
It's last week, they, they can run on stickers.
I'm sorry?
They can run on stickers if they'd like, but they're dead.
Oh, right, they could enter a sticker.
Yeah.
Uh, the second question has to do with the Main Street survey. Um, do you know when that will be completed?
The, for, for us, or for the, uh, the town survey? I believe they have their limited survey.
Yep.
We, ours is a little bit different. I was talking to uh, Scott and Darris, who's the winner of the current, they were on the computer earlier. He's telling me that it may be beneficial for us to do a survey before not knowing about some of the grants that you get. But it's a gamble, it's, it's one of those things, we might, it's the bulk of the the possible three hundred thousand, it's, it's a lot of that, that's the bulk of the, um, what do we say, the budget for the uh, operational cost of, of building, not, not operation, uh.
The, the design?
The design, I'm sorry. That's the bulk of that uh, cost, so we take, we run a gamble of spending money when we may actually receive it.
So we don't have a time, so basically we don't have a timeframe yet for the survey?
I will ask him to, tomorrow. Uh, he was gonna speak on it today, and I forgot, I'll leave that, but as far as, like, like I just said, we could.
It's a question.
Spend money where we may not have to.
Okay.
So, so what if we, well, Mr. Hall brings up a good point, though, if, if we do, if we wanna be proactive now and do it now, spend the money, assuming that we have, I don't know, I'm guessing it's a, if it's a survey, it's fifteen thousand dollars, whatever it's gonna be. Do we, can we spend it now to be proactive and get it done, and then get reimbursed for it?
I don't know if we can get reimbursed. Let me, uh, let me, his concern with the survey was actually getting survey numbers right now. So he, he wanted to push forward to, to, to do it proactively.
Sure.
Because it may, it may, you can push back, because there's so much work on it.
Right.
I will ask him tomorrow, that is a question, I will, I will send answers tomorrow.
Yeah, fine, I'll.
Try and hit some ballpark numbers.
Yeah.
Because there's also a sidewalk improvement project going on Main Street, so.
We're trying to dance, we're trying to dance around that project now, and we're trying to, it's the, trying to get our work done and figured out before Mr. Ferry wants to do, needs to do his work, and we're, we're
Yeah.
It's a, it's not a chicken and egg kinda thing, but it's, we're trying to work hand in hand, try to do everything at the same time.
We're gonna have to go first before any, any of the, uh, road work.
Now, you mentioned the town has to do a survey as well?
They've done their portion.
Oh, okay.
They, I believe they have, I mean.
Okay.
No, they have, we saw a plan, remember, we were just, they're looking at plans, they have plans together and everything, so.
They have a plan, yeah.
So it's more a case of Water District doing their survey and in coordination with the town?
Correct.
A lot, a lot of the waiting on it has to do with getting listed, not getting away from got listed on the SRF, and then it was.
But you're listed, from what I heard earlier in the meeting?
But then, after getting listed, that took forever, and then the, the DEP was so far behind uh, doing their due diligence on, on uh, this, the projects that, and the list is this long, so they, it's just taking a lot of longer this year for the, for.
I was talking with Senator Pacico over the weekend. And infrastructure money, if it can pass at the federal level, he said there'll be significant money coming to Massachusetts, and he was going to fight for the district, uh, his district, to make sure they got their fair share. So, that's promising.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that, if you put it in perspective with the cost of the treatment plant was, it was seven million dollars, that, that road's gonna cost over four, around four. And four million dollars to replace a water, the treatment plant costs seven. So that's how much prices have gone. Well, it's significant.
Yeah, that, that water's, that main on water, yeah, that water main on main. Say that, I know, too bad.
The main.
Holy cow, uh, it's not a cheap, yeah, that, we had like four million dollar, uh, uh, it's around, yeah, around four million dollar, we did initial, you know, survey, not survey, but a, a report put together, they asked me to, I don't know, million dollars. Around four million dollar, we did initial, you know, survey, not survey, but a, a report put together. They, I don't know, four million dollars.
That's gonna be a costly project.
Very costly, very costly, so.
That's why I get to seeing this infrastructure, uh, earmark is so big for the district.
Right.
And we are, the, the, one of the, uh, one of the benefits we have with the grant, uh, earmark, was that we are a disadvantaged community as far as, uh, income levels, we're, we're considered a disadvantaged community.
Right.
So that helps. Right?
Keep, keep pushing, getting those grants and getting, like, like Jeff said, yeah, water and current, they're pretty, they're pretty solid, they're pretty proactive.
Again, we were at, and I, I'll chuck, but when, you know, I was looking into it across the small creek.
Yeah.
They do.
Yeah.
They just, I keep, I, I don't know why anyone isn't working, but everyone is working. Exactly.
There's money out there.
There is, there is. Yeah, especially with the infrastructure, uh, package coming out, too, with this thing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You, you can reach out to me, kind of, while.
I, yes, 'cause it, it is a learning process.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I'm actually glad to have people here. This is, it's a, I mean, honestly, we, we really get public here.
One of the things that's so important, because there's so many rumors and half truths to get out there.
Yeah.
Is to get the word out, improve communication.
Yeah.
And I, I will add, I really like the card that summarized all the projects that the Water District has going on.
Yeah, that's what we, we just started doing that.
That's what we could fit, yeah.
Yeah.
We could do that even after.
And, and you had, you touched on a good point, is you see so many myth, truths, or rumors, and we're, we're trying to, we're trying to, uh, you know, put it all out there, so everybody gets all the right information. And that's the least we could do, is put a mailer out, I mean, once or twice a year, maybe three times a year, whatever it's gonna be, so. Trust us, we don't, we, we like to water our grass, and we like to keep rates low, um, but there's always a, there's a juggling act there that we're, we're gonna have to try to keep up, so.
Our, our new website is actually gonna have, um, and you can sign, sign up for email alerts, so anything that's going on will get emailed to you.
If we have an outage somewhere, I don't like saying the word, but.
Right.
Yeah. Main Street, you know, if you, right, if a disturbance in the water, we'll be able to notify the people who decided that. That would be pretty powerful.
And I hear what you're saying about the brown water during flushing. That happens everywhere. Somerset's going through it.
Yeah.
No one's used with it.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Eric? Thanks for showing up. Appreciate your questions, absolutely.
I noticed based on your agenda, you're in the executive session, so.
Yeah, we're heading in there now. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
All right. Uh, motion to go into executive session under provisions of chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A.
So moved.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Open session will not reconvene.